What's little Maggie up to?
Just trying to keep her entertained. We walk the dog twice a day to get everybody's energy out and, you know, her preschool is actually pretty cool and they've been doing, posting videos of the teachers reading stories so that she can kind of maintain the connection to the community. And they're also helping describe to the kids in their own level what's happening. All right, we're at 7 o'clock.
I was waiting for Joe. Is he back?
Yeah.
I'm here and I would assume that the meeting has begun.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. I'm Mayor Melanie Piana and welcome to the City of Ferndale's first virtual city council meeting on Wednesday, March 25th. Thank you for joining us this evening. And I just also wanted to say thank you for your patience with us as we had to reschedule our meeting from Monday to tonight. And we rescheduled it to make sure we had our technology in place and everything ran as smooth as possible. And our goal was to record our first virtual meeting and have it be seen live on our cable access channel. But unfortunately, we've had some things go not as well as we thought and we will not be broadcasting live on our cable channel. So we will be posting a recording of this video meeting up on our cable channel after we are done. But people can still call in on the phone to be part of the call to council. So thank you. I apologize for the inconvenience this may have caused. And before we get started, I just wanted to say that we do have a Zoom moderator this evening and it's our Assistant City Manager Kyle Palet and helping manage the meeting and public comment tonight is Kara Sokel, our Communications Director. I wanted to get that out of the way before we begin. And to start, we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and we will be using the flag right behind me and on Councilwoman McColsky's video monitor as well. So let's start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic, from which it stands, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. That was a beautiful chorus. Next, we are moving on to roll call. Madam Clerk Miller, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember McColsky?
Here.
Councilmember Bruner James?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Leaks May?
Here.
Councilmember Pollock?
Here.
Mayor Piana?
Here. Next is the approval of the agenda. And before we move forward, I request that the regular agenda item 7A and the related item 7B, consideration of the acceptance of bid proposal and the award of a contract to TSP Services, Inc. for Wanda and Gary Park Improvement Project, and also the acceptance of Giffords Webster 2020 Park Improvement Proposal for Construction Management Services and 7B, consideration of approval for in-house purchase of park amenities as listed be tabled indefinitely. May I have a motion to table indefinitely regular agenda item 7A and 7B?
Madam Mayor? I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Pollock and a second by Councilwoman James. Would there be any comments or discussion at this time?
I'd like to make a comment if I may.
Please.
All right. And I apologize every once in a while, there's a little glitch. I just, I wanted to acknowledge that I really appreciate city staff and the Agenda Committee and the sort of conundrum that we were faced with last week in deciding what was business as usual and what we should proceed with and what should be completely taken off considering where we were at in the crisis then and not being sure where the crisis was moving. I know, speaking for myself, I wasn't sure where we were going to land on those issues. I was genuinely interested in discussing it with the rest of council and so much has even changed since last week. It's a disappointment to not go through with that discussion completely. And I just wanted to acknowledge that before we took it off completely.
I would echo that sentiment. It's something that I feel like we should talk about at some point. I do love the design and I think there's a lot that can be done with piecing out certain portions of it, perhaps looking at some of the landscaping, doing some of that first. But obviously now is not the time.
May I ask the city manager to give sort of what happened with the bid proposal?
Certainly. Yeah, Mayor, this morning, the Parks and Recreation Director informed me that the contractor who was going to be awarded the bid for this project, which dates back to, I think, June 2018, actually, requested a modification of the contract that was approved that would have been up for review tonight. And the timeline for completion and the timeline to start the project would be indefinite due to the nature of COVID-19 and how that's changed some of the things also related to the government's executive order to suspend all unnecessary construction. And secondly, there would be an unknown cost impact. So without definition for a timeline and without definition for a cost, there wasn't really a decision to make here today. I would say that this project is related to a grant that was received by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources in 2018. It was a significant grant that would have delivered some important park board priorities such as EA accessibility in both the parks, some sustainability elements as well, and some park activation elements that were also the park board at that time. So we will strongly work with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources to see what they can do to extend the grant timeline in terms of a deliverable to give us a little bit of flexibility to figure if it's possible through the budget process and as we understand what the economic outlook is going to look like after this.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there any other comments from other council members?
Madam Mayor, I would like to say a few words if I may.
Sure, please, go ahead.
I was originally going to support this item. These types of large capital investment projects don't happen overnight. Dozens of hours by staff doing research and writing up and reviewing proposals, members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Ferndale residents, who have spent many hours and meetings over the past couple of years discussing and helping develop these plans with the staff and community members, and most of all, residents who live near these parks who have invested their own personal time and energy attending park planning events at these parks over the past couple of years, providing their inputs and ideas. They've invested their time and energy into designing these parks. I was going to support this tonight because we have already invested a lot of time, money, and energy into this project that isn't listed in the packet. And if this gets shelved, then most of what we've accomplished will need to be redone at a later date. And we all know that costs never go down over time, they only go up. However, upon receiving the notice from the contractor that they cannot guarantee when they could start the project, and most importantly, that they could not guarantee the prices they quoted, they basically said, quote unquote, "We are pulling our proposal," without actually saying they're pulling their proposal. I'm not comfortable supporting a project where we cannot be guaranteed the timing and the cost by the contractor. So I feel that we do need to postpone this project indefinitely and revisit it when our situation is back to normal or at least near normal, maybe a new normal, with the understanding that this will cost more in the future than the quote we were previously given. So that's where I stand on this evening.
I appreciate everybody's comments and this has been a very complex issue to navigate. The coronavirus emergency definitely has impacted all cities' investments going forward in some way or shape or another. And I think I am very disappointed and sad that we're at this point of a three-year project and this is like the, was the push-button vote. But with the, I agree with everybody that the contractor changing their stipulations of their own contract is untenable for council to vote for, and I agree with that. I am worried, though, of dropping some grant money onto the floor, which is what happens when, which is at stake since we're at the end of our grant period of two years. In the MDNR, we were supposed to expend the money by June. And so this may or may not be feasible going forward. But I know staff has already started, our park staff has already started lobbying MDNR to see if we can get an extension. So really, what we're doing is hitting the pause button here and we're going to come back to it because we know these parks are a priority for our residents. And until we have a better understanding of what's going on financially, what the financial impact of the emergency is onto our finances, because we're in the middle of it now, and the city manager will go through that next. So at this point, stay tuned, folks. We'll be discussing bringing these investments back when the time is appropriate. These are still a priority at some point in the near future. So at this, Madam Clerk, may I have roll call on the vote, please?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollock?
Yes.
Councilmember McColsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Piana?
Yes. Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda and we have, I have one change to for an amendment. I would like to switch 4B to 4A. So the Governor's Executive Order 2020-15 needs to be 4A and 4B is the update on COVID impacts.
So moved and may I offer an amendment as well in addition to those you mentioned?
Yes.
The addition of 4C, DDA presentation?
Thank you. Are there any more amendment changes at this time? May I have a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments, please?
I will so move.
That's second.
That was moved by Councilwoman James and seconded by Councilwoman Leaks May. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollock?
Yes.
Councilmember McColsky?
Yes.
Councilmember James?
Yes.
And Mayor Piana?
Yes. Next on the agenda is 4A, under Presentations, which is Governor's Executive Order 2020-15, Temporary Authorization of Remote Electronic Meetings of Ferndale Council and Other Public Bodies.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is Dan Christ. I wanted to bring this to council's attention for consideration. We've obviously already started the electronic meeting, but this proposed action would formalize the recognition of the authorization to conduct a remote electronic meeting consistent with the Governor's recent Executive Order 2020-15. She executed that executive order on March 18th and that executive order temporarily suspends the requirement of the Michigan Open Meetings Act that a public body meet in a physical place and a required physical presence be at that particular meeting. The executive order does have requirements that are incorporated into the process that council is utilizing for the meeting this evening. The meeting this evening is enabled to allow for two-way communication so that members of the public, members of the public body can hear and be heard by other members of the public body as well as members of the general public. And there will also be an allowance for members of the general public to provide comment to the members of the public body and other members of the public during the scheduled public comment period. All persons wishing to participate in the electronic meeting are going, going to be allowed to participate consistent with the city's already adopted rules of procedure. The length of any particular public comment is, is still as, as already adopted by council rule, limited to three minutes. And finally, just the, the executive order currently runs in a schedule to expire of its own accord on April 15th, 2020. It's likely that that may get extended. The proposed action for council would be to authorize electronic meetings for all City of Ferndale boards and commissions for the duration of Executive Order 2020-15 until such time as that executive order expires. So if there's any particular questions that anyone has with respect to this proposed motion, certainly be happy to answer any questions.
See no questions from council? We need a motion on the recommended action for this item.
Your Honor, Madam Mayor, I move that consistent with the Governor's Emergency Order 2020-15 to authorize electronic meetings for all City of Ferndale public bodies until the order expires and further to provide that all public comment shall be permitted during the public comment period time, that we adopt that procedure.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman James and supported by Councilman Pollock. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call and the vote, please?
Councilmember Pollock?
Yes.
Councilmember McColsky? Councilmember McColsky? Councilmember James?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Leaks May?
Yes.
Mayor Piana?
Yes, and that passes. Next on the agenda, under Presentations, is 4B, just update on COVID-19 impacts to the budget process and the DOT construction and introducing that as our city manager, Joe.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just give us one second to have Kyle queue up the presentation. You should see the screen change with the presentation in the center. Yep, and all the images on the right for the viewing audience. Yeah, so over the last two weeks, there's been significant disruption in everyone's life, but also there's some procedural things that have certainly been disrupted. And I'm here today to talk about the budget process and some adjustments to the procedures, how we're going to move forward. So, the next slide. Today, I'll just briefly talk about what a typical budget process looks like without a pandemic and then kind of what new factors are in here because of COVID-19 and some responses to that that we're going to be recommending moving into April. Next slide, please. So a typical budget process, there's certain things that are set in stone via charter and there's certain things that are movable. We're going to focus on the things that are movable. So, but I will outline what is not. So July 1st is when our fiscal year begins. So that is when any new, for example, I'll just use the current budget, the budget for fiscal year ending 2021 will begin in July 1st. And then our current business year will end June 30th. So that is the, the beginning of a new fiscal year. In the fall, the budget process has always begun with the Capital Improvement Plan update. It's a five-year capital plan and it is just that, it's a plan. But there are items that are moved through the plan as it's adopted in the fall. And those items inform what budget requests are presented to council in the spring budget process, which we're in right now. If you move forward into the March, this is what is adjustable. So in March, what we would like to do and typically do is we hold a city council budget workshop, which is an open public workshop. What we would have done this year, because we do have a new city councils, we would have taken that opportunity to hold the council strategic plan update we had planned on the morning of March 21st. And then following that strategic plan update, we would move into a general overview of the macroeconomic picture, right? How is the region doing in terms of economy? What are expectations in terms of property assessments and values and revenues for the coming year? And then we would promote some of the department strategic plan highlights that had preexisted. Then we would have kind of married what we learned from the strategic plan update with what was presented. And at that point, we have feedback from council that can help inform first draft recommendations in April. And so you'll see, the first public budget reading would typically be held the first meeting in April. And then we would have a second public budget reading, the final meeting in April. And that is required by charter. At that point, city council must adopt the budget for the next fiscal year. So really, we're working backwards from that. So the flexible piece there is the March piece for us. That's what we're going to play for. I'm going to speak to that moving forward if you are the next slide. So over the past two weeks, the world, I'm sure for everybody here, viewing audience included, has changed. So from the, from the financial aspects, what is really on our mind in terms of budget impact is there's constrained capital markets. And what I mean by that is it's unknown in terms of how public finance and private finance is going to look. Property value impacts are unknown. We assume there will be some kind of impact, but it's unknown at this point. And as you know, property values are the basis for majority of city revenues. There are certainly significant small business impacts that are, that are unknown right now. We all are recognizing the constraints that they're working under as we fight through this pandemic as a community. So there's a, there's a lot of situational positions that are just going to likely change in the coming weeks. And so with that, we have, we have some recognition of where we are at in terms of change and we're going to be recommending some budget reductions going into April. And we'll talk about that in the next slide. Here's just a highlight, we're focusing really on capital reduction measures. So council adopts a three-year budget. And so what we do have at least is an operating plan for the second year of the budget. Our current, the one that would have started, will start in July 1st. And we also have the strategic plan that is a two-year strategic plan. So of those items that is in the strategic plan right now, my recommendation, and you'll see this in, in this April budget, is we will be removing the online records management system. What I've done is I've created the table to help you understand what the deduction looks like at what fiscal year. And so with the fire department, we have some capital deferments. I'm working through the fire chief on that, but fiscal year end '21, that looks like a deduct of $101,000. CED, we're talking about adjusting some contractual services. Really, the biggest investment that's going to be put on hold until we better understand how this shakes out is investments in park improvements and specifically, the biggest ticket item, obviously, the Kula Community Center. We have conceptual phasing, how we would improve the community center, pending a lot of items, but that budget item was one and a half million dollars. At this point, we don't have the sources and we don't have a good understanding about what the economic environment looks like. So it's my recommendation that these capital projects be deferred until further notice. That's not to say that they're not priorities. That is to say that we should, to the mayor's point, take a pause as an inflection point to kind of consider. Sorry. Yeah, so this, this is just a summary of initial capital reduction measures you'll see me bring to April. And that's still a discussion point at the April meeting. Next slide, please. The tools, though, that we do have that give council some flexibility. So what I've proposed is essentially moving that March city council strategic planning update and budget workshop to the fall, which would be after the fiscal year begins. And my hope is, is that we have some idea of what the new normalcy is going to look like. We have some idea of, of the impacts of the stimulus on the community and small business. And we have hopefully an operating downtown that is back in business. So at that point, what council can do is amend the budget in September. So my suggestion is we hold the August strategic plan, the strategic plan update, sorry about that, in August. And at that point, that's an opportunity for us to reprioritize and reimagine those priorities, right? And it's just, it's really an opportunity to re-envision things. And that could happen in August. And I would propose that we bring back an official budget amendment, which would serve as your real, this council's real budget post Labor Day in September. And that still gives us the majority of the fiscal year to actually execute that plan. Next slide, please. So just to re-summarize why, we really want to understand the economic picture. We believe it's going to be more clear in the fall. And I don't feel comfortable providing recommendations without these reductions, given the uncertainty right now. Really looking forward to the, to getting clarity on the recovery assistance and how the stimulus is going to impact us locally and regionally. And again, near-term priorities, they just might shift as a reality of the impact of COVID-19. COVID-19 has really changed everything. Everything that we thought we knew two weeks ago is different today. So with that point, I think flexibility is really a predominant driving factor for my recommendations on this budget. I want to make sure that the city council has the flexibility it needs to navigate these waters. And next slide, please. Just a summary of the timeline update for the public and for council. On April 13th, I suspect we'll be holding another virtual meeting. You'll receive an update, an updated first reading of the budget from me. In that package, you will see, receive the actual traditional budget book, the numbers. And you'll also receive a presentation like you would any other time. What we try to do is provide, again, that, that economic picture, the zoomed-out economic picture of the region, and we zoom back in and give you an economic picture of the city. And you'll get priorities that are being carried forward. And then we'll also highlight those, those that are not, that I just kind of touched on. On April 24th is the charter second reading. That's when you have to, by charter, adopt the budget. You'll have some projections for the fiscal year ending '22 and '23 because we do do a three-year budget forecast. And then in August, September, again, my recommendation is to revisit the strategic plan and hold a budget amendment to officially adopt this council's actual budget. And next slide, please. A comment on the DOT. Work did start slowing kind of when the news ramped up in Ferndale. So the work crews during that first week reduced by about 50%. So production on, on the site was actually minimal. Then on March 23rd, I officially received a note from the construction manager that subcontractors pulled other people for the governor's order. So there will be a timeline impact on this and there will be a cost impact. One factor for the timeline specifically is that the current state of the economy has put the office development in question this year, for sure. The markets have slowed down to a crunch. There is no market activity right now. There's no banking activity. And so we are working closely with the developers to navigate those unknowns together and to see what we can do about making sure that those essential pieces of that mixed-use project remain a deliverable. We'll just have to be flexible, just like everything else, for enough flexibility is going to be key in everything in everyone's life. I am holding virtual construction manager meetings. I'll have another one next week. And I will be hoping to hear a plan for ramping up construction as soon as safe and as soon as possible. But we're doing all we can virtually right now in terms of organizing and planning and restructuring. Without COVID-19, the deck was slated to open at least the basement level to the public by July. And that's just the basement level. Without office, we're going to focus just on completing the deck and the West Roy Street improvements and the alley improvements and the downtown sanitation improvements. And we will continue to have dialogue with the developer on how we can address the office, the street-level retail and residential. Once again, the economy gets pumped again. Right now, it's a grinding halt, which really, there really is no conversation to have at this point until things start moving again. And next slide, please. Thank you. There's my contact information and any questions, I'm open to them.
Are there any questions from council at this point?
I do have a question. On the DOT construction, where does this leave the, the most recent expenditure that we? where does this leave the, the most recent expenditure that we approved? Does that mean that has been halted?
No, that is actually, well, that was in process, but the, the fourth floor won't be completed until that was in process. So the fourth floor, had this pandemic not happened, it was scheduled to be completed by the end of April, first week of May, which is when I had a public walking tour of a city council that I was going to be conducting. So that's going to be the first thing to be continued as soon as they're allowed back on site.
Okay, thank you.
The good news is all the materials are procured for that. So that's the other challenge. Here's the supply chain is completely dried up and all the, most of them not, what would be deemed as nonessential trade is not getting through the borders. So I do know that going into the this, this week, when they were still working partially, they were having a difficult time obtaining some of the things that were in order. They were just halted at the border.
Any other questions from council at this time or comment?
Madam Chair, if you're also entertaining comments, I do have a comment. And this really applies both to this presentation and also to the adoption of the electronic meeting procedures. I just wanted to acknowledge that city staff, especially, I know I've been interacting with Joe and Kara and Kyle, that's the city manager's office, the communications department, and I know that there are many others working behind the scenes. I basically cannot express enough my gratitude for how quickly you guys have been working on very, very quickly evolving updates and orders from the state level. And I know this has not been easy, even putting this meeting together. It seems like it's running relatively smoothly. And it's because you guys have been working very, very hard behind the scenes. And I just was not comfortable moving on without acknowledging that.
Sincerely thank you on behalf of all my team. They've been a great joy to work with, and I think as a team, everybody has really risen to the occasion.
Well, I really appreciate your comments, too. I'm going to reserve mine until the end. But I know how difficult it is right now for staff of reviewing everything that was in process, a work in progress, is being revisited and reworked and rethought, paused. And that is happening at every department level of your local government right now, and that's the scenario in which we are living, and that's reality. And the DOT is just one of those projects. So Joe, thank you for finding a workaround on our budget process. I'm very supportive of this so that we can have a better understanding of the next six months and that council can actually have our strategic discussion and do amendment as we what we don't know, maybe will become known in the next three or four months, and we'll be, have better information to make better decisions about our financial picture. So any other questions from council at this time? Next on the presentations is the DDA presentation, and presenting that is, I believe, Jordan Torty?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, I'm actually presenting on behalf of DDA Executive Director Lena Stevens, who had some maternal duties that she had to take care of this evening. But I just want to start this off by just acknowledging how hard she and her team worked to put this presentation together. She's been a major catalyst of the collaboration that I'm going to talk about in this presentation. And so I just wanted to kick it off with that as an important point. That being said, I'm going to deal with some of the technical snafus here, and please stop me if you have questions or if you're having trouble seeing the feed, but people should be able to see now the PowerPoint. And so Kyle, if you could move us to the next slide, please. Thank you. So I'm going to start with, and this is well said by several members of council, what we have been focused on since the the sort of critical shift in, in behavior brought on by COVID-19 is processing the torrent of information that has been made available to the public from a variety of agencies. To go with all those question marks in Joe's budget slide was just an insane amount of information. And what we tried to do is really cut through the chaff, and really Lena was a leader in that, in helping galvanize all of the information that came in. And so it was Lena, myself, and actually our chamber director, Joy Wells, coming together and streamlining this process so that we could get things boiled down from technical to accessible for the average person, the average business owner who's got enough to figure out right now. So what I'm going to do is go through, starting with the context of those health orders. I'm going to go through some of the things the businesses are doing to adapt, which has been really inspiring. Some of the ways that businesses and residents have been stepping up to help, which has been incredibly inspiring as well, and ways that the government has adapted to deliver service. So on this slide here, you can see some of the, the big key orders that have affected the business constituency in terms of who can be open and what they can do while they're open and how they have to operate when they're open. These two orders here from the state and from the county that have gotten a lot of headlines lately, so I won't spend a ton of time on them, but any business that does not sustain or protect life cannot be operating right now. And so you can imagine the impact that that has on not only the employees of that business, the employers, the real estate, the landlords. So as you say, it's a cascading effect that we have been sorting through resources that, as those have come online, figure out how to match the resources that are available with those specific needs. And then, of course, obviously, protocols for operating under this order. County Executive Dave Coulter has laid out screening programs for, for staff at those places, symptom checks, trying to, again, flatten the curve, mitigate the spread of COVID-19. So if we go to the next slide, please. So I want to start with business innovation. It's been incredible to see in the span of a week all of the different changes that businesses have done to their own models, to spinning off new side businesses, to curbside pickup for businesses that you never would have thought could do so. New delivery services, really leveraging technology, the collaboration between businesses, and of course, just maximizing the utility of online. We'll go to the next slide and we'll start talking by just a few of those. So some examples of changes to procedures. Western Market, you can see in the picture there, they had that handy guide of here's how much six feet is for social distancing. They created special hours for folks who are particularly vulnerable to this disease. They allow proper cleaning and procedures. Anybody who's been to Western Market lately has probably noticed the hand sanitizer at the front and the gloves at the register. So they're just being very, very mindful and conscientious in the embracing of all these multiple layers of requirements, but still operating as smooth a business as you can in this environment. So we just wanted to highlight them for that. If we go to the next slide, please. Collaboration, the WAB and Emory, streamlining services and being flexible, as Joe mentioned, is a theme here. So combining menus, combining delivery services, craft beer and wine, food, all these different things that folks are used to enjoying in our downtown. Our businesses have really been rapid-fire innovating to keep those services and goods available. One-Eyed Betty's, Rosie O'Grady's, Pops for Italian, online ordering systems, joint menus featuring fan favorites. So they're taking feedback from their customers and they're making, finding ways to deliver people's favorite products, not just their products in general, but their favorite products to people online. And so they're trying to keep Ferndale open for business, even if it's got to be virtual with limited contact. So if we go to the next slide, please. So curbside pickup. So many businesses have gotten into the game of curbside pickup and delivery. Many even came up with their own direct delivery services. Trams Mead was an interesting case where not only did they create curbside pickup, but they converted their business to a, to a general store. One of the interesting things about the rules that have been come down from the state was food production and grocery stores are one of those categories that are deemed essential. So businesses, you know, they are a mead seller and producer, but now they're also selling life essentials and daily essentials for groceries. So that people are finding not just ways to stay open, but ways that are productive in achieving the community goal, not just being open for open sake. And so it's just really inspiring and powerful to see businesses take this on and innovate in the way that our Ferndale businesses are known for doing. So that was just a really great thing to see. If we could go to the next slide, please. Another really special part of this has been what's being called in, in some of the articles now, the arsenal of health. You know, Michigan's heritage of being the arsenal of democracy, where we churned out 25,000 Sherman tanks in World War II, in Warren, and all the bombers out of Willow Run and Ypsilanti. Now we're turning those machines on for all the different healthcare needs that our healthcare infrastructure and our public safety first responders need. And that's just been really, really touching to see come in from all kinds of sources. So we just want to highlight a few here. I'll start by saying there's been several dozen of these coming out, gloves and masks and everything else. But we just wanted to highlight a few that we thought were really indicative of the diversity of what's happening. Valentine Distilling joining Griffin Claw to mass-produce medical-grade hand sanitizer. They donated their first ceremonial case to our Ferndale Fire Department, and they have more on the way. The fire department's put in an order for five cases, and these guys are looking to scale up and really get this out to the healthcare network, which is huge, because the shortages are very real. The Boston Tea Room donated hundreds of spray bottles to the fire department to apply that sanitizer. One of the challenges of creating medical-grade products, and Joe mentioned this in his budget presentation, is the supply chain, sourcing materials, sourcing packaging is really challenging right now. So Boston Tea Room, having those spray bottles to be able to do this, was a huge deal. And then Resident Evelyn Elster, producing and donating homemade HEPA masks to the Ferndale Fire Department to keep our folks safe in the field. These kind of specialized masks are a lot more capable of protecting folks and keeping harmful particulates out than sort of that, that garden variety mask that you might see on the shelf at a, at a supermarket. These are very specialized and hard-to-come-by products. And so the fact that people are stepping up to provide them is making a huge difference. And so to that end, there's been a lot of interest for folks who want to help. And one of the ways we've tried to streamline this is to make it easy for folks to just focus on providing the thing they want to provide and not having to navigate all kinds of sources. If you want to donate something within the city of Ferndale, if you're thinking small scale, you know, let's roughly say less than 100 units. You want to call our hotline, our COVID hotline at 248-837-6247. That's right there at the bottom of the screen. You want to call that number, that's going to get routed by city staff to the right folks. We'll navigate what it is that you're trying to produce, and we'll navigate you through all the different requirements of what it takes to get that donation out. Now, if you're looking to do something larger scale, like in the Valentine Distilling, so this is for all the businesses, or maybe some basement businesses we don't know about, but you want to go right to the state. The Michigan Community Service Commission has set up a portal. You can email covid19donations@michigan.gov, or you can call 517-335-4295. And they can navigate you through any of the state requirements, as well as the, the distribution channels they have. The state of Michigan's got a very robust business-to-business portal, and they've made that virtual. So if you're looking to get in the game and help out, that's amazing. We want to encourage that. So just take heed of those two numbers there. And again, I just want to thank everybody who has donated so far. It means so much and it's making a huge difference. So on behalf of everyone that's been receiving those, I just want to extend our heartfelt thanks. Next slide, please. So another example of innovation has been retail online ordering. So this photo was taken before social distancing got a lot more strict. But you could see that businesses have been very adept at finding ways to get their products in the hands of customers who want and need them. And just a whole host of retail, and the challenge for retail, especially those that are not food or life safety, this challenge is especially hard for those folks, but they have risen to it in a very inspiring way. So one of the things, and we'll talk about this in a moment, that the DDA has provided is a guide for all those businesses that are still open, and that was something that summer on staff has been a huge part of. So we'll talk about a little bit of that in a, in a moment, if we can move to the next slide. So businesses that haven't been able to operate, I wanted to pause and just acknowledge some of the businesses have made the difficult decisions to close. These orders that have come down, you know, this is a serious thing, and shutting the doors, not everybody, you can't move an event online. At least not in the same way as having it in person. So the Magic Bag, Go Comedy, Rust Belt Market, Hi-Hat, all of these businesses that are mainstays in our community are making that tough decision, but they're doing it in the most stoic way possible, and they're contributing and they're, they're making a difference through that sacrifice. And so a lot of the assistance that I'm going to talk about in a moment is aimed at helping these particularly vulnerable businesses that have no way of generating a revenue stream right now. And mitigating not only the spread of the disease, but the cascading negative impacts of having revenue shut off. So if we can move to the next slide, please. So one of the biggest things, and I'm always a fan of a good segue, and so these challenges, one of the things that Lena was adamant about, and we are adamant about, is that we are here. One of the things that we've done is we've stripped away the sort of jargon and bureaucracy. All these institutions are still here, but what we've tried to do is cut through all the chaff, so you don't have to dig through 20 emails, look on Google and a bunch of websites and make a bunch of calls. We have three numbers here for three specific needs. And you just call these numbers and you will be routed to assistance. So if you're looking for business support, Lena Stevens, our own Lena of the DDA, is fielding that hotline, 248-336-4156, or you can email business vm@ferndalemi.gov. Any business sources that you're trying to navigate, if you don't understand what's available, if you've looked at stuff, if you've tried to apply any business questions that you have, you can call that number right there. Individual needs assistance, if you've been laid off, if you're not qualifying for unemployment, if you're having trouble applying for unemployment, or if you need things like food or utility assistance, or any of those types of resources, you call United Way for Southeast Michigan's 211 number. They're your, they're being a switchboard, they're pulling together a bunch of their partners, and they, they even have a fund set up that they're trying to get assistance in the hands of individuals that are, you know, in, in the gaps between programs. They're not eligible for programs, but they still have these needs, and that's still very real. And so we have found that United Way for Southeast Michigan, that is who the state is pointing people to, the county is pointing people to, and so in turn, we are pointing people to the 211 number. For folks who are homeless, or emergency assistance is needed, or, you know, there's been the Order Against Evictions, which has been great, but folks who are already without shelter, we're referring folks to Lighthouse. Lighthouse is, in fact, they've been active in our community for some time through South Oakland Shelter and Lighthouse before those two entities merged. They're familiar, for example, with the homeless folks at Aitken Woodward. They directly engage those folks. They are very familiar with what it takes to provide emergency assistance to those who need it. So we're referring people to that phone number. They also have an emergency fund set up for those types of needs, 248-920-6000, or contact@lighthousemi.org. So anything that you are trying to get in those categories, you can call those numbers and they will route you to assistance, and they're cutting through red tape. If you're having trouble getting to those other two numbers, if you're having trouble navigating any of these resources, you can call the Ferndale number and we'll, we will help route you as well. But we tried to make this simple so that you, if you know generally what you need, you just call that number and they'll hook you up. So that's that. If we could go to the next slide, please. So this is an example, and I really just have to, again, give Lena kudos. Because as the three of us worked together to, to distill all this information, answer as many questions preemptively as we could, Lena has been incredibly savvy and relentless in putting this information out to the business community. So in this divide and conquer attitude that we've taken as agencies, Lena has really stepped up to make this happen. And so these business news emails, we're not putting them out, we're putting them out as we have information to share. We're not trying to make these weekly. We realize everybody's getting blasted from everyone they've ever bought a product from, to every government agency. All these emails are going out about everyone's response to COVID-19. So what we're trying to do is distill information, refer people to our web portals, because the Downtown Development Authority and the city of Ferndale have web portals where all this stuff lives. If you missed an email or you just want to check in, you can go to those. But Lena has been amazing in putting this stuff out at the right time, in the right ways. And so we've broken down the orders. What do they mean for your business? What is a critical infrastructure worker? You know, steps for closing your business. There was a great article in the Oakland County Times from one of our own businesses, Bobcat Bonnies. We've been sharing out those tips and just getting best practices in the hands of folks, so they know this is what you should pay attention to, and this is what it means for you. And you're not having to read a bunch of stuff or be on a bunch of calls. So you can kind of take a look at those. That list is growing. And in addition, we've merged the city and the DDA list. We're wiping away that bureaucracy, too, right now. It doesn't matter if you're a chamber member, you're not a member, you're in the downtown, you're in citywide. We're getting all this information out to everybody so that people can get what they need when they need it. The other thing that we're doing is we're doing wellness checks. So as we've gathered all this information, and now we have a better understanding of at least what the first wave of resources is from the state, the county, and the feds, we're doing wellness checks to make sure people have seen the emails, or if they haven't seen the emails, they know that these resources are available. And so we're going to be doing that. We're aiming for early next week to get that launched in earnest. So we're going to be out there, reaching out to people, making sure if they haven't seen the emails, they can get in touch with this stuff. If we go to the next slide, please. So I want to dive in very briefly to just some of those financial resources, because we've been seeing a lot of acronyms all over the place and in the news and in emails. And so I want to break down a couple. While a lot of these are complicated, and the state and the Fed have not had the best reputations for helping fast and comprehensively, what we have learned and what we believe about these two programs, our advice is take the time to apply, because these are different from your garden variety programs. This isn't something that's going to take months to figure out. The SBA, for example, you can see the text on there, but I want to let you know, this loan here, and I know loans are not ideal, but I want to let you know this loan here, and I know loans are not ideal, but the scale of this crisis has made that be the front line. And you can get a $25,000 loan or less from the SBA. The decision comes within three weeks, and it takes five days to disburse that money. So you're looking at four to five weeks at most. You can have that assistance in your bank account to support your business. So, and if you're not eligible for that, that could open you up for other opportunities. And also, you can apply for multiple things at once. You don't have to wait from a denial for one to go for the other. And so businesses that don't have a ton of time right now already can maximize their time by going after these resources. The state, however, is upping the ante. They are pooling some grants together. My sense, just in my professional opinion, the amount of grants is not enough to cover the scale of this problem. So that's going to mean they're going to be selective with those grants, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't try. The biggest thing, again, I want to emphasize is go to these websites, get your name in the queue, and apply. The other thing that we're hearing from our elected officials at the federal level in particular is anyone who's denied they want to know about it because they want to advocate for that business. So we are here to advocate for you. We're telling you that these are worth putting your time into, and we're even willing to help you walk through those. And so are folks at the state and at the SBA. So one of the things I'll throw out there for the folks at home that are looking to go on these is we're finding, one, the call volume at the call centers is immense. You'll be on hold for several hours. And the websites are getting hit with such traffic that you could be, you could take three hours to fill out a 10-minute application. So what we're advising folks is if you're able, go to the website as your first line of defense and go during off-peak hours. We've heard from a lot of businesses and applicants that have gone at weird hours, six in the morning, eight at night, two in the afternoon, when nobody else is going to be on there, and they're getting through a lot faster. So those are the important takeaways here. And again, in the business updates and on the city pages, you can get the details of these. And you can also call that business hotline, and we'll walk you through step by step. So if we can go to the next slide. So this is something, in addition to finances, what we've been trying to do is, and really, again, this is where the DDA has really shined, and I can't thank them enough, particularly this social distancing bingo. We've really come up with a lot of great promotions to help businesses that are currently active get to their customers and streamline that exchange as well. And I just want to do a quick shout out to Lindsay in Communications, who really inspired this idea for social distancing bingo, and it's been pretty successful. We've only got eight prizes left. And we've been trying to focus on, you know, we're getting told a lot about what we cannot do. There's a lot of things we still can do. And so the DDA has been amazing in putting this stuff out there. Check out their Instagram, check out their webpage. We're going to talk about something else that's really exciting on the next slide. But this free curbside pickup parking, that was something the DDA also pioneered, working with Joe, working with the parking staff to provide this flexibility and encourage people and make it easy for people to operate within the rules that are kind of being laid down upon us. And so that's just been a huge success. And also, I want to do a quick shout. If you, as a resident, see a business doing something cool, if you are a business and doing something that you're doing to adapt to this environment, send that to us. Use the business hotline, use the business email, send that to us, and we will get that on our channels. And to that point, if we could go to the next slide, please. So this is an example of, so if you notice, if you've been to the city webpage, just like that, the downtown page has a COVID-19 hotspot right at the top of the page. And the DDA has the restaurant guide, which, again, Summer on the DDA staff has been a huge part of making that accurate, keeping it up to date as things change on the daily, on the hourly with businesses. All this information is there, and so we're really trying to boost our businesses during this time within the environment that we're in, which is not an easy task. But I have to say, again, this is where the DDA has really shined and where our businesses have shined as well. So if you're able, and if you're in a position to, please support our businesses, check out the promotions, and take a look at ways that you can still engage with them online. If we go to the next slide, please. So another just piece of this is, again, if you're doing something, if you see something, say something. We want to help boost your signal as best we can. So we're doing a lot of media outreach and tracking. We're trying to not only amplify what our businesses are doing, but again, we're trying to sift through the news. And if there are things that we think the businesses need to know, the residents need to know, we're sifting through all the headlines and the COVID stuff, and we're trying to just get you what you need when you need it, as well as just highlight our businesses when they're doing really cool things and to increase their traffic as well. If we go to the next slide, please. So a few things are in the works. So in the past couple of weeks, we've been very busy getting to this point. And we are getting our heads wrapped around the resources that have finally been made available, some that are coming online, and a few things that we're in the lab working on right now and trying to deploy as fast as possible is we're continually, first off, we're continually doing financial recovery resource research and lobbying. Trying to say that five times fast. We are pushing out the resources that are there, but we're not considering that in endgame. We're already seeing gaps in those resources, and we know the amounts that are being put together, while great, and get them out there, it's not going to be enough. So we're constantly looking at more. We're trying to find for people who have come back to us and said, "We can't, we don't qualify for this. It didn't work for me." We're trying to find solutions for them, so we're not stopping there. So that's ongoing. Some of the other things that we're launching is trying to keep people healthy and engaged and together, even when we're physically apart. So virtual fitness classes on Facebook with local studios. Picture there is CrossFit HCS. So that's a really cool thing. And again, another quick nod, if there's businesses that are trying to do this as well, reach out to us, and we will try to put you in the program. We'll try to get you out there and try to encourage people to participate in your stuff as well. We're also looking at a public art walking guide. One of the things, again, that we can do is go for a walk, be outside and get some fresh air. We're trying to make that fun and inviting and interesting as well, again, within the parameters of public safety. And then another thing that's going to be rolling out very soon with all these folks doing curbside pickup and delivery, we're trying to get together a Takeout Ferndale Dining Challenge. And that's being led by our Ferndale Chamber of Commerce. So a lot of cool stuff coming. We are really, really here for you. We are excited to be here for you, and we're taking this seriously. And we're working every day to make sure that people who need resources can find them quickly and get them quickly. And if they're not getting them, we're here to troubleshoot as well. And so, again, if we go to the next slide, please. Just want to remind you folks, again, that's the common drum I'm beating, is we are here, and we're getting this stuff out there as fast as we can. This is our personal information. You can reach out to us as well. But again, if you go to the next slide. Final slide, that one, yes. So these are the three numbers, if you remember nothing else from this presentation. That's why I ended with this slide, is please use these numbers and emails. And if you are not getting through on the United Way, if you're not getting through on the Lighthouse, you will get through on the Ferndale Line. So if you have to pick one, call our number, and we will route you. But we're trying to streamline your experience as well. If you know you need individual assistance, we don't want you wasting time on a business hotline. So go right to 211. We are here as a last resort as well. So again, jot those numbers down. They are on our webpages, and you can reach out to us. And we, again, I just want to reiterate, we are here for you. And I just want to close by, again, thanking council for backing us up and alerting us to community concerns. I want to thank the city manager's office for helping us get organized and providing us the support we need and getting this technology in place so that we can keep coordinating. For example, CED and the DDA and the Chamber, we're all fully operating remotely here for you as well. So we're keeping those services going. And I just want to, again, finally thank one more time, Joy Wells at the Chamber and Lena Stevens at the DDA, who really, really wrapped around this effort and made this possible. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions about these materials. I know it was a lot.
Are there any questions or comments from city council at this time?
I have a comment. Mayor, I really, I just want to thank Lena with the DDA, Joy with the Chamber of Commerce, and you, Jordan. You used the term divide and conquer. Really, what you guys did was unite and conquer. I know there are a lot of communities across the state, larger communities with more resources that don't have anything near this level of tools and communications available in one place. The three of you have really created a template of what the business community needs in times of crisis. Thank you all for your hard work, and you all turned this around in less than 24 hours. And that is why more of our businesses are better prepared to get through this than others across the state.
Thank you, Councilman Pollocka. Any other council members? If not, I will sort of chime in here. And I agree with Councilman Pollocka, what you guys have done is Herculean. And I think all, everybody needs to understand how responsive our city staff has been, not just from the, this team here, our business team, but everybody on our city staff is working significant hours to make sure that we are getting the accurate information, pushing out timely information to everybody that is asking. And Jordan, I just wanted to give kudos to you, Lena, and Joy. I have been promoting your work through the Michigan Minister League and on LinkedIn because I think it's impressive. And I think it's, other places who may not have the resources to do what you have done can leverage Ferndale's work. And I think it's important that we are all in this together, not only in Ferndale, but in spirit and helping businesses across the region and outside of Ferndale. Because, again, we're all in this together, and anything that clarifies the government jargon into easier bite-sized pieces is always needed. And I also wanted to say thank you for handling all of my questions from business owners. Business owners have been texting and direct messaging me and emailing me and calling me. And wanted you to know that working in tandem with this team here, so all of your questions get answered in a timely way. So keep doing what you guys are doing, I hope, during this emergency. And I hope that we'll be able to not burn our candle at both ends going forward in the next three or four weeks. So thank you, Jordan, for this great presentation.
Thank you.
Next, on the agenda moving forward, is the call to audience. And this call to audience is going to be different from the call to audience you're used to in the council chambers. And this is in compliance with the Revised Emergency Open Meetings Act. And I'm going to read the procedures for our electronics meeting now, but I will repeat at the end what happens next because they are quite lengthy. So stick with me here. The Governor's Executive Order 2020-15 temporarily suspends the Michigan Open Meetings Act requirements that required meetings of public bodies be held at the physical space with a physical presence at the meeting. And this, obviously, this order was issued to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 and protect public health. So the procedures for public participation in the council's electronic meeting are the following. To, number one, to assist with the meeting's coordination, public comments, call to audience comments, as well as comments on any particular agenda items will be taken at one time period during the call to audience, which is now. People who are video conferencing participants, to make a comment, use the Raise Your Hand feature on the Zoom platform. Kyle, our moderator, will create a list of names of persons interested in making a public comment. And upon direction from me, the mayor, the moderator, will enable the voice capability feature for the person next in order on the moderator's list. Basically, they're going to turn on your microphone so that we will be able to hear you. At the conclusion of your comments, the moderator will enable the voice capability for the next person on the list. So those who are participating without the Raise the Hand feature, who are participating through phone-in access, or who otherwise are not able to indicate an interest and making a public comment through the Zoom platform to the moderator, the mayor, after the public comment from those members of the public on the list, will ask whether there are any additional persons who may wish to address council. And once recognized by the mayor, such person may make their public comments. The mayor will request comments from additional members of the public in groups for those whose last names in A.D., E.H., I.L., M.P., Q.T., and W.Z. And so I'm asking your patience when I, the mayor recognizes direction as chair to try to coordinate public participation because there might be a lag with the technology. And so we're just going to wait a little bit to see if you chime in because the responses may not be immediate. And then, of course, the time limit for individuals' public comments shall remain three minutes. And I will be timing on my phone here at my home desk. And then finally, access and participation for persons with disabilities, the OMA requires that we have a way to participate virtually. So persons with disabilities may contact city staff or assistants accessing or making public comment during the electronic meeting, and they can call this number, 248-366-4157. So with that, I am going to, oh, and one more. One more, is that we have a rule change for our public comments in that we are enabling comments for, public comments for anything on or off the agenda. So since we don't have any regular agenda items and those were tabled, your public comment period for this meeting right now is for anything, anything that you wish. So starting with that, Kyle, our moderator?
Mayor Piana, can I, can I make a point of clarification?
Sure.
I just wanted to, since a lot of people may be new to Zoom, I wanted to describe my understanding of how you access the Raise Hand feature. And someone jump in if I'm wrong about this. But if you're on Zoom, there should be a bar across the bottom of your screen. One of the boxes, for lack of a better word, says Participants. If you click on the Participant box at the bottom of the screen, something should pop up that basically lists everybody who's participating in this platform. And there's a Raise Hand button at the bottom of that list. You click Raise Hand by clicking it at the bottom of the list of participants. I hope that's helpful.
Is it possible to get a share screen to show exactly how to do that?
Kyle, is that something that you can do without?
I cannot do that, Mayor, because as the moderator, I don't have a Raise Hand screen.
Okay, so we're going to have to use those directions that Councilwoman James has said, go down to the bottom of your Zoom, click on Participants. Under the Participants pop-up, you're going to see a list of everybody in there and then a Raised Hand item. And the moderator, Kyle, will see it. And please post your questions in there. And then, Kyle, do we have anybody calling in?
We do, I do not see any. Yes, there is, okay. So once you raise your hand, please leave it up. Do not press Lower Hand until you've spoken. So we'll just start from the top of the list. So first, we have Mr. Stoway.
Please state, please state your address, too, and your name.
All right, is the audio working okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay. My name is?
Good evening.
My name is Brian Stoway. I live at 437 College Street. Good evening, Mayor Piana and City Council. I want to first thank all of our amazing essential workers who are working to keep us all safe during this time of increased risk of COVID-19 pandemic, including doctors, nurses, police officers, firefighters, grocery and food service workers, delivery drivers, warehouse workers, public officials, and staff, and many more. Thanks for your service. Secondly, and due to the immediate and impending financial difficulties for all of us, I am thankful that the city council removed the real estate-friendly parks items from the agenda, 6A and 6B indefinitely until the COVID-19 pandemic is over. Suspending public money on frivolous items from the general fund during this almost certain recession is irresponsible. So I'm glad that those were removed for now. Thank you. Instead, we must focus on community and public health. This public health crisis is not even yet at its peak. The city of Ferndale must step up to our progressive leadership role that we pride ourselves in. It is almost inevitable that hospitals will begin to overflow with COVID-19 patients. As of today, Henry Ford Health Systems announced that two of their hospitals have already reached their limit with COVID-19 patients. I'm proposing that Ferndale transform our currently empty schools and other large-capacity buildings into overflow hospital-bed areas to prepare for this. It will be needed. It is better to be prepared and not need the beds than it is to be unprepared and need the beds later on. This will lead to unnecessary sickness and deaths if we do not. Let's be proactive and be the leaders and inspire the rest of Michigan. and inspire the rest of Michigan. Lastly, during the stay at home order, we have some neighbors that do not have homes. I am glad that we are working with Lighthouse. Additionally, I would propose that city leadership call upon our local landlords and hotel operators to fill any empty habitable units with people who are either home insecure or unsheltered. This human centered action is a major benefit for everyone's health to limit the spread of COVID-19, and will help us comply with the governor's stay at home order, which is the intent to flatten the curve. The faster we control the virus, the faster we all go back to opening businesses, public spaces, and events. Thank you for taking your time to listen, and I hope you make the right choices.
Thank you, Brian, for your comment and joining us via camera tonight. Kyle, is there another public comment?
I do not see any other raised hands, mayor.
Through the chair, we did receive a comment that was requested to be read. And upon that request, it's my understanding from the city attorney that we would read it. So I have that message. I'll just go ahead and read that. I have, the citizen is Evelyn Elster. I do not have her address. The comment begins regarding regular agenda items 6A and 6B, which have been tabled. The economy is on the verge of collapse, and we are fighting a deadly pandemic. We were led to believe the city would address essential expenditures only during these times. Park improvements are in no way essential. Now is the time to reevaluate and revise priorities under the circumstances. It may be necessary to reallocate funds to our public safety and essential services. No better time than the present. The fact that you would even consider these frivolous actions at this time is a brazen slap in the face to every member of this community. A great number of your citizens are or will be struggling financially and experience compromised health in the very near future. Are you entirely reprobate? Have you absolutely no shame or sense of decorum whatsoever under these circumstances? Fiscally responsible stewards would table the park improvements, as well as any other nonessential expenses, until the economy stabilizes and we have substantial lock in this virus. Emergency funds may soon be needed elsewhere, and park funds seized for the greater good. Now is not the time to make a laughing stock of your property taxpayers any more than it is a time for city staff to make a laughing stock of the mayor or council. Let another group of taxpayers in another city stimulate the economy for a while. We have done more than our fair share here in Ferndale.
Thank you for reading that public comment into record. Kyle, anybody else raising their hand for a public comment at this time?
I see no further raised hands, mayor. I would recommend we move to the second stage.
Your honor, we also did get another email from Mr. Flores that I think there may have been a, even though he didn't specifically ask for it to be read, and I think there might, it might have been assumed in the context.
I have not read my email.
It came at 6:30, not long, just as we were setting up.
Councilmember, I could mention that Mr. Flores appears to be in the Zoom meeting at your direction. I could unmute him and see if he would like to speak.
Yeah, if he's here, why don't we try that?
Mr. Flores?
Oh, he sent a chat. I am, but we'll have to speak via phone. Oh, so.
So what I'm doing is just, if I can get his phone number from him, I'll be able to unmute that specific phone number. Mr. Flores?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Flores.
Good evening. I apologize. A little bit of technical difficulty here, but I'm glad that we're able to connect. With the permission, may I start?
Please go ahead.
Okay. Buenas noches. Good evening, City Council, mayor, and the city of Ferndale. My name is Augusto Mike Flores on Woodington Street, and I am pro Ferndale. I've always been a strong advocate of a citizen's right to ask questions, request transparency, and demand accountability from our elected officials. But I also believe in recognizing and applauding leadership when they are doing the right thing, especially under unprecedented circumstances. First, I would like to thank our city staff and essential services for their responsiveness to this crisis and their commitment to our city. Second, I would like to thank our newest council members for stepping up so early in your roles. I have seen both council members Makowski and James actively engage with our community and the region via several communication platforms. The community truly appreciates your quick responses and engagement. Third, I would like to thank our tenured council members, especially Councilmember Leaks May. Our network intersects with the senior community, and I've heard how you have gone above and beyond to support our senior community. Councilmember Polica, we have not intersected, but I am sure that you're doing your part. Fourth, I would like to thank our mayor, Mayor Piana, for your leadership. Your declaration of a city-state of emergency signaled to our community the severity of COVID-19, and has preemptively set up the city for county, state, and federal support as it becomes available. I'm sure that you're also engaged in a lot of meetings with regional and state leaders behind the scenes, and we thank you for your commitment and leadership during this time. As we move forward through uncharted waters, I urge council to lead with our, to lead our city with financial prudence. This will ensure our city is agile enough to deal with any future uncertainty. And I'm glad to hear that that is a recommendation from our city manager. As always, thank you and gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Flores, for joining us tonight and your comments. Kyle, are there any more public comments waiting in the queue?
Mayor, there are no further raised hands. At your direction, I'll move to unmute so that we can do the alphabetical.
Okay. Why don't you go to unmute and do the alphabetical? So now we're taking phone comments. And since we don't know how many people there are on the phone who would like to make comments, we are asking you to join us if your last name ends with A through D at this time. Hello? So the open mics are open. So hearing nobody with the last name A or D, I'm moving on through last name E or H for public comment. Hearing no E or H, moving on to last names starting with I through L. Waiting a little bit longer before any delays. Okay, moving on to last names starting with M through P.
Kyle, do you see that somebody is attempting to call and talk? I see that number 248-982-4531 is trying to, what?
That number, so everyone is unmuted. It may be background noise. If anybody, you know, wanted to speak, they're able to. And then, once the mayor goes through the list, I will mute everybody, just so we don't have any more background noise.
Excellent. Thank you. Hearing nobody with the last names from M through P, moving on through last names Q through T. And hearing none, moving on to the last grouping of last names starting through W through Z. Okay, so I think we have completed our call to audience tonight during, during the virtual way. If you have any, have experienced any technical difficulties that we don't, aren't aware about, please let us know after the meeting. They may be on your end, but we can maybe help troubleshoot, give some advice through that. And it may identify any technical issues on our end. Okay, so moving on to the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And as normal, I will read the items on the consent agenda. 6A, approval of the minutes of regular and special council meetings held March 9, 2020, as submitted by a city clerk. 6B, approval of the 2020 HIDTA subris recipient agreement between Oakland County and the city of Ferndale, as submitted by a chief of police. 6C, adoption of resolution acknowledging March 31 as day to celebrate accomplishments and victories of transgender and gender nonconforming people, while raising awareness of the work that is still needed to save trans lives. 6D, request to backfill a customer service representative position left vacant when the previous occupant was promoted to accountant, as requested by the human resource director. And 6E, approval of the bills and payrolls submitted by the city manager's office and subject to review by the council finance committee. What is the pleasure of council this evening?
Mayor Piana, I would move to approve all of the items on the consent agenda as, as read by yourself. I would also request that we read the text of the 2020 International Transgender Day of Visibility Resolution.
Sure. So that was moved by Councilwoman James, and sorry, Councilwoman Polica, it was seconded by Councilwoman Leaks May. And so before we vote, why don't, Councilwoman James, you read 6C?
Thank you. This is the 2020 International Transgender Day of Visibility Resolution. At a regular meeting of the city council of the city of Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan, held virtually, rather than in council chambers, on the 25th day of March 2020, the following resolution was moved and supported unanimously. The city of Ferndale has a longstanding tradition of upholding the dignity of individuals supporting legal equality and fair treatment to all citizens, and appreciating our diverse community. And the International Transgender Day of Visibility is an annual day to celebrate the accomplishments and victories of transgender and gender nonconforming people, while raising awareness of the work that is still needed to save trans lives. And it's critical to show support for the trans community, to spread understanding, and give recognition to trans people. It's, it's the time for education, empowerment, and action. Visibility is not about being seen as an individual. It's working together to transform society. An International Transgender Day of Visibility was founded in 2009 by US-based transgender activist Rachel Crandall, a licensed psychotherapist and the executive director of Transgender Michigan, created to acknowledge and honor the successes achieved by trans people. Therefore, you, Melanie Piana, mayor of the city of Ferndale, do hereby proclaim March 31, 2020, as observed as International Transgender Day of Visibility in the city of Ferndale. And we collectively, as council, urge all citizens to join us in this special observance to respect every person's human dignity and create an environment that is safe and respectful for all.
Thank you for reading that resolution, and the important one that I know everybody on council supports. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a vote call, please?
Councilmembers Makowski.
Can't hear you.
I'm not muted.
No, no, I'm sorry. There you go. Go ahead.
Okay. Did Makowski respond, please?
Yes.
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Polica?
Yes.
Mayor Piana?
Yes, and the consent agenda passes. Moving on, we have no items on the regular agenda, as they were tabled at the beginning of the meeting. And so we are now moving on to call to council. And I'm going to have Kyle, our assistant city manager, help direct our staff members to step up for a call to council.
Yes, mayor. So I'll just go down the list and call out our staff members that are present in the Zoom meeting. And if they have anything, they may speak. And first up is Dan Antosik. Dan, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
So, you know, for the most part, business as usual, as much as possible from the DPW. We are adjusting to this period of time that we're in right now. So our main focus right now is providing our essential services, responding to emergencies and stuff like that. So you may not see as many white and yellow trucks out as what you normally would, but we are still out in the community getting things done that we need to get done. West Main, or West Troy Water Main Project went quite well over the last week and a half or so. Contractor did a great job. Business is understood. When we had to shut them down with water and stuff like that, and we were able to really stay on schedule, the contractor did a really good job. So that project is all finished up as of Monday afternoon. So we're happy that that went well. Our, the work that we started over on Shepherd Park, everything went smoothly with that. Happy with that. Right now, we do have some larger contracts that were approved by city council in the previous weeks, as far as our water main projects and our road projects. Those still aren't really slated to begin work until mid-April. So we are just staying, staying in contact with our contractors, scheduling pre-con meetings, keep things moving in that realm. And I do want to say, big thanks to Fire Chief. He's, he's been very helpful with our, with our folks down at the DPW as far as the precautions that our folks need to take and stuff like that. I do have a big shout out to him. And I do have to say, this is one of the best local council meetings I have ever attended. So everyone involved in this, big shout out to you guys, because this was, this is very fantastic. And I think we just got a glimpse into the future. Maybe not super far down the road, but.
You spoke too soon, Dan.
You guys did an amazing job on that. And I think city staff, all around, has been doing a great job, very responsive, quick to respond. And kudos to everyone on that. And I do just one more thing. Compost and yard waste pickup is right around the corner. We have been talking with Sacra. Things are still scheduled to go as planned with the first full week of April. So beginning April 6 with yard waste pickup. So that'll go on as normal. Do you want to say, just for our sanitation contractors, if our residents could, please bag all of your trash. It is important that all of us workers within public works, those doing infrastructure work, sanitation workers, and stuff like that, we need to make sure that we're always available to respond to emergencies, to pick up the trash, and so on and so forth. So please bag your trash at this time while we work through this COVID-19 and stuff like that. That'll really help ease the minds of our sanitation workers and stuff like that. So just, that's, that's one kind of touching point that I have. And other than that, you know, if you have any issues or anything like that, DPW phone lines are working. If we got to call some people in, we'll call some people in. We're always there to respond to emergencies at this time.
Mayor Piana, may I ask a question through the chair?
Certainly. Go ahead.
Dan, I have seen a couple of reports from other places in Michigan and around the country about this crisis causing sewer problem. country about this crisis-causing sewer problems, people flushing things that shouldn't be flushed and sewer backups. I was just wondering if you've observed anything like that in Ferneal that we need to be conscious of, or if you have any recommendations on that tip?
I feel like we watch the same news channels. But what I will say is we haven't experienced any issues as of yet, but the, some, for example, flushable wipes that say that they're flushable wipes are not necessarily flushable wipes. Something that you would not flush down your toilet, please do not flush down your toilet at a matter of time here. I think we're actually going to get into the rainy season of spring. So please refrain from flushing anything down your toilet that you normally would not flush down your toilet. So we can minimize sewer backups as much as possible, but we have not experienced any sewer backups as of lately. And fingers crossed that we do not have to. So that's, that's what I got for that.
Thank you.
Mayor Piana, I have a question for Dan, if I may, through the chair?
Please go ahead.
Dan, you actually mentioned that spring is now here and today was a fantastic day to do gardening for all of us stay-at-home folks. Wondering when the curbside pickup will be starting and if it will be starting?
Right now, and speaking with SACRA, we're still on schedule to begin the first full week of April. So yard waste pickup will begin April 6th as of today. I don't know if anything's going to change as far as that goes, but if anything does, I'm sure that Kira and I and Carlos will be having a conversation about that. But as of now, it doesn't sound like anything is going to put a stop to that. So still look out to put your yard waste bags out for that first full week of April if they may not already be out already. So we're still on schedule for that stuff. For the most part, a lot of the work that we do falls underneath the essential, critical infrastructure sort of deal. So outside of trying to thin out our crews so we don't get anyone sick or anything like that, it's business as usual for us at the DPW.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next, we have Human Resources, Dan Jacy.
Good evening, mayor, council. The only thing I'd like to say is that we have, we've got a lot of systems in place that we didn't necessarily utilize to its full potential, but with this crisis happening, we've been able to step right into these processes that have been in place and use them to make virtual work really easy. And so I'm really excited that that level of innovation, which is one of our core values that we're going to be focusing on this next quarter, allowed us to be able to take advantage of those systems and do virtual work almost as if we were at the office. So thank you for, you know, past leadership for making sure that innovation plays.
Thank you, Dan. Next, we have our fire chief, Jack Bichet.
Hi, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to start out by saying we truly do have a wonderful team. The city staff is so much ahead of other cities and departments. And I'm saying that because we've been on top of this since January, we've been looking at this. And I know other cities weren't taking this as serious, talking to other fire chiefs around the region. We were proactive from the get-go, notifying the seniors and public about this and then getting our game plan together and meeting the huddle with Joe and Chief Palazzolo and the other members. Kara's putting out media blasts and everything. I think we are doing the right thing by giving the right message. I know it's unfortunate, I don't know what that noise was. Did you hear that?
Sounds like an airplane.
Yeah. I think it's unfortunate that this is probably not going to be totally preventable, but right now, Ferneal's doing great. In the last two weeks, our ambulance crew has only screened 10 possible cases and we haven't heard from the hospitals if they are positive or not. And they're supposed to tell us that. But we are taking all precautions. At this time, we're wearing the N95 mask, gloves and goggles on every run to limit exposures. And then we also, I want to say thank you to all the people, businesses and residents that are supporting us. Like Jordan had mentioned, that Evelyn Elster, she made us over 50 of these N95 reusable masks. Valentine vodka, giving us these fifths of, they're not spirits, but they're 80% alcohol. They come in these nice fifths, so don't get the wrong idea. At the firehouse, you see whiskey bottles. And I think that's great. And I talked to Rafino over there, and as some of you may know, I've been chosen to be the liaison for the South section of Oakland County for the fire service at the Emergency Operations Center. So I have a lot of connections now. And I told Rafino, hey, when you're ready to push out bigger quantities, that could probably help you by placing a ticket in the Emergency Operations Center system. And that tells all 64 fire departments and all the police departments and all municipalities who has supplies. So that could help a local business. Just giving a couple shout outs there. And we'll take any supply. We had some people donate three N95 masks and some donated 15. We'll take any quantity. We just think it's great. And anything we don't use, we had someone donate a bunch of bandages and the package and that, we'll push over to Ferne Care to let them use those supplies as well. So I just wanted to say those nice things, first of all. I know it's a drag that people have to stay inside. And I know mayor and council and Joe and everybody's taken a lot of phone calls from people that are upset, but we're following the county and the state recommendations and even up to the federal level. And this is all a matter of public health and just keeping people safe. I want to stress the social distancing. I want to stress the hand washing for 20 seconds, warm water and soap. And a, if you don't have that, I'd like people to use the hand sanitizer. Avoid touching your eyes, nose and mouth. I know this is repetitive, but I have to say it, six feet distance. Today, I've seen a lot of people outside walking and riding their bikes. I thought it was great. But I did see a couple of people walking and holding hands and a little too close. I mean, we all have to do this. It's not just a matter of individual health, it's a matter of everybody's health. And everybody should really be checking in on their neighbors as well by phone call or text or something, elderly or even young people. This is really getting out of hand right now. The bell curve is showing that it affects the age group of 60 to 69 the most, and then it tears down going backwards. So people in their 50s, 40s, 30s, and then same thing, 70s, 80s, 90s. And I think it's 60 to 69, you've got a large population, but it's also a very vulnerable age group. There currently 20, as of four o'clock today at the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, there was just under 2,300 cases in Michigan with 43 deaths. Oakland County had about 553 cases with 11 deaths. And I know that number's already changed. That's how rapidly this is moving. And they, they told us that this is probably going to change double, triple in the next few days. And I think part of that is because tests are starting to come back. So I just, it's going to be scary to the public to see these numbers jump like that, but we're, we're not past the curb yet. And we just got to keep practicing the, the simple steps to fight this. For people that have fever, cough or shortness of breath, or if they start feeling ill, I advise that they should try to call their healthcare provider. Everybody's really busy right now, but try and call your healthcare provider, get their direction because the hospitals are overwhelmed. I know Mr. Stowali was saying Henry Ford, that's absolutely true. And Beaumont's right behind them. There's some hospitals in the north side of Oakland County that are just on like three-day supplies of equipment and stuff. The Strategic National Stockpile delivered a certain amount of product to the Oakland County. We only received 6% of that for first responders and they didn't even deliver it all. The nation's behind on this. It's not just Oakland County, the nation's behind on this. So we're working hard to get new supplies and keep up with demand. I know neighbors, and I'm not trying to give you guys horror stories, Southfield is really struggling right now. They're getting 60 calls a day and most of them are COVID-19 cases. They, they're overwhelmed right now. So we're working on mutual aid, all the departments around here, not just the Oakway, but all the departments and private EMS are all tying together, trying to get this done and help out each other in this time. I'm just very happy that it hasn't struck us yet, but I think it eventually is going to start affecting us, you know. Do you guys have any? I know someone asked about a hospital at the high school. I think that's a very, very good idea. We don't have the supplies to stock it, first of all. And then I talked to Oakland County today and they said, well, why don't you let us handle that? They're talking to the Army Corps of Engineers to try and get Lawrence Tech University to be a mobile hospital. And then I think they're going to do the same thing out of Rochester College. They have a plan, they're just putting it together and as soon as they can. So I just want people to know that we're on top of this. That's all I have. I know I talked a lot, I'm sorry.
No, it's the topic of the day and the month. And your leadership, not only in the City of Ferneal, leading our city through this in your role, but I just wanted to commend you for your leadership role with the Emergency Operations Center with Oakland County. And that's really fantastic for, for the City of Ferneal, but for South Oakland as well. And just wanted to say how proud I am that you're doing that on behalf of our community. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Next, other public safety official, Chief Palazzolo.
Still muted.
You got me now?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Hey, I want to echo with the fire chief. You guys picked a real winner when you named him the fire chief. I've been nothing but impressed with his leadership, his vision and looking three chess moves ahead while everybody was looking at the move right in front of them. His staff, Captain Toit, Fire Marshal Barr, and all the firefighters are going above and beyond. We are lockstep and heel together on the public safety side, and I have not seen one chink in the armor between our two units. Also thank city manager, HR and Kara. We've been meeting a couple times a week and it's, it's been very helpful. Moving on, so the biggest thing for us now is the uncharted territory of the governor's executive order and the county executive's order. This is a new area for us. We're used to knowing what the rules are and what to enforce and who it goes to and how we operate within that. They seem to be changing the rules on us and not really giving us a ton of guidance. First, we were told the attorney general is going to receive and prosecute all complaints. And then we were told that now we're going to do it at the, the county level. We are being very realistic in when we handle these calls. And we are responding to them. The most likely course of action is going to be a warning and advising them to get out of the area, i.e. violations of the parks and things like that. For businesses, we're going and confirming what kind of business they have. And these businesses are doing so many different things now that just because a business says they do A, they might be doing three more that are involved. And I had a perfect example from one of my colleagues in another city. His son works for a moving company. By any means, it doesn't seem like that would be essential, but they have picked up the contract to move out all the students' stuff from their dorm rooms because this university might be used as a backup hospital. So they would be classified as a essential workforce. So when we go on these, we're finding out that there's many more facets to these businesses and we haven't found any yet that have, that are in violation. So we're good, we're happy to hear that. Like I said, this is new to us, but we are maneuvering through, I think, fairly efficiently. And the bottom line is, we will always be there. If you pick up the phone, one way or another, there will be a law enforcement or firefighter that comes to your door. We've made numerous arrangements with state and local and county law enforcement agencies that if, God forbid, every single one of the Ferneal officers gets sick and quarantined, we have multiple backups in place. And we are sharing those resources. We're reciprocating with all of those jurisdictions. We all have each other's back. We all know we have a job to do. And quite honestly, I'm impressed with the men and women on this department and in this, in this profession that are coming in every single day, knowing that there's a decent chance that you're going to be exposed while your families are sitting at home. So I would like to just say thank you to all of them. That's pretty much all I have. I would, I would, you know, we are getting multiple calls for kids being at the skate park, kids and adults. And we go over there and we send them on their way. I think we had five today. I would ask if you are watching this and you have neighbors and they're doing that, please ask them to cease and desist because it is pulling resources away where it could be somewhere else. But we are still responding to all those. I'm open for any questions you might have.
Chief, this is Melanie. I was wondering, are people crawling over the snow fence into this skate park?
Well, today I was out and about and I heard a call go out for two adults. So I, I went over there myself and they're, yeah, you can either crawl over the snow fence or they moved a picnic table up against the fence and crawled over that way. So these two young adults were from Sterling Heights. They, once I told them to leave, you know, they left no problems. I helped them move the picnic table out of the way. But yeah, it's just a snow fence. So if you're, you're taller than four foot, you can just step over it.
Okay. Thank you for that information. The snow fence is there for a reason. And it's trying to put forth, or we're reacting to the executive order by the county to close playgrounds and skate parks. So I appreciate your due diligence there. My question for you is, was recently brought to my attention by Senator Jeremy Moss, our senator, and that around state driving license renewals and that the secretary of state was extending the deadline and they're asking police departments to make sure not to give people tickets for expired licenses. And I was wondering if you've heard this, received this information or directive?
No, but I can tell you, you have to be doing something pretty drastic to draw our attention, to get us to stop you nowadays. But no, I have not heard that. And I, quite honestly, I probably get 100 and some emails a day and something might have got lost in the mix.
I think it just came down from the secretary of state, which is why my senator called me. And so if you can direct your police officers to make sure that we're not giving tickets out for expired licenses during this time period, that would be great.
We can, we can definitely do that. Yeah, we understand that there's unusual times and unusual circumstances. And these are our neighbors, you know, our friends in our community. And now it's a time that we are all in this together. We understand that this is not time for small enforcement of things that don't need to be enforced right now.
Excellent. Well, thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Mayor Piana, through the chair?
Yes.
Captain, so I'm curious to know if there's been an uptick in activity in the downtown area or even on the main thoroughfares with businesses. Many of them are now closed and have been closed for some time. Have we noticed that there has been any, an increase in break-ins because of that? Any, any of that kind of activity?
I get updates and I check the logs daily. I have not seen one incident downtown where a business was broken into. Our directive, once this started, was we're going to do multiple checks in all those areas, making ourselves highly visible, continuing to turn corners, giving that sense of stability that, yeah, there is still law enforcement out there. But yeah, I have not seen any incidents of that.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions from council for the chief?
I have a brief question. Do you have any insight on any scams that people should be aware of at this time?
You know, I've heard. Uh, you know, I've heard, I haven't, haven't heard of any in, in town, but just like, um, any other time of crisis, this seems to be the time when the, uh, scamming and the stealing and the, um, uh, any type of those phone scams, uh, come forth. Uh, I would say if you're gonna donate money, donate to the American Red Cross or reputable, uh, organizations. Um, I had heard, uh, that there were, uh, not in this area, but, uh, people walking around, um, talking about testing and things like that. But we haven't had any calls like that, that I'm aware of.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will check in. CED, any additional comments?
Um, yes, thank you, Kyle, Mayor, Council. Just very quickly, um, but sort of in the same spirit of Chief Palazzolo, uh, while CED is still operating and we're still doing things like code enforcement and state mandated building inspections, uh, we are really dialing back. We're understanding the moment and we're focusing on life safety. Uh, we are trying to work with people and minimize exposure to things that are going to exacerbate the crisis. So, you know, one of the things that I did wanna point out is, um, around the holidays, we had that 90-day window where the new changes to some of our ordinance would go into effect, things like unsolicited materials and outdoor storage. So while those are in effect, the date was March 16th, 2020, when those went into effect. We're taking into account the circumstances that we're in. Uh, things like see, click, fix are still active. People can still report things and work with our team. Uh, but we are gonna be exercising a lot of discretion and flexibility and working with people during this time, but we are still here to serve. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Jordan. Our Parks Director, Lorena.
Good evening. Um, yeah, I have a few, um, announcements here. Um, again, Parks and Recreation is operating right now. Um, however, we, our services are limited. We are working, our staff is working with our parents, the coaches and parents and the community and addressing any questions and issues they have with regards to sports programs, summer camps, and, um, anything else that we're offering that they are part of. Um, our parks are closed, well, not the parks entirely, but the amenities within the parks such as the skate park and, like the, uh, mayor mentioned, as well as our playground facilities, bas- basketball courts, swings, um, inline skating rinks are currently closed. Um, so we just wanna encourage that everybody abides by the rules and do not use those facilities at this time. Um, in addition, through our Recreation Department, um, we do offer smart services where we transport, um, Ferndale residents to and from their locations. We do pick up from your home. However, during this time, those services have been reduced to emergency and, um, um, essential services only, such as transporting seniors to doctor's appointments, um, or picking up prescriptions, or possibly the grocery store, but only to things that are essential. And we operate Monday through Thursday for our smart services up until 3:30 PM, and that's by appointment only. You can find, um, the information on our website where you can call and make an appointment with our dispatcher. We are still operating Meals on Wheels out of the Kulik Center where, uh, meals are being delivered to seniors on Mondays through Friday. Um, also, with regards to what's going on, we partnered with the YMCA where we are offering, um, through the YMCA services, they are, have parked a vehicle, um, where they're providing meals to youth and, um, young adults with, um, uh, disabilities at the Kulik Center on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 3:45 to 4:15 PM. So those meals are prepackaged and they are free. Um, and lastly, um, anything else that we had scheduled at this time has been postponed. Um, we are working to do what we can and to do our part in this, um, at, during this time. Uh, we do encourage everyone to stay active in your homes, of course, um, keeping in mind social distancing if you have to go out, but this is a great time for you and your family to make a park in your backyard. Um, do things at home. Um, don't just, you know, stay in the house locked up, but be active so when we come out of this, you guys are still have, um, good health and wellness.
Thank you, Lorena. Next, uh, let's check in with our Finance Director, Cheryl Stubblefield.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a couple of things. Uh, unfortunately, the last round of meter change letters went out on the 16th to the 17th, so people got those letters just as we were minimizing the hours at City Hall. How, my staff has been amazing working remotely. Just about everybody has a phone or a laptop or something and we are getting to all of those phone calls, people that are calling, leaving messages. We're trying to get information to residents about their water bills, the water meter changes, and any other like tax questions that they might have. My staff is, um, answering those calls and calling people back for those. Um, I do want to acknowledge the IT staff because my whole department went remote and they have just been so instrumental in helping us stay connected, stay online, putting this presentation together tonight, obviously, and making sure that people had phones so that we can still reach out and have conversations with our residents so they weren't so cut off from us and not knowing what's going on in their area. Um, I think that is about all that I have. I'm talking to Joe just about daily and, uh, we're doing everything that we can to make sure that we, uh, are exercising our fiscal responsibility during this uncertain time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Communications, Kara.
Um, yeah, very briefly. So we obviously have a lot of messages out there right now. Um, and I'm gonna make it really simple. So first of all, I'm going to, uh, paste it in the chat right now. Uh, for those people who are calling in on the phone and can't see the chat, I just wanna direct everybody to the city's website, ferndalemi.gov. On the homepage, in the top navigation, there's a tab now called COVID Response. If you wanna go directly to the site, it's ferndalemi.gov/services/covid-19-response. And all of the news and updates and information that has been discussed by all of our directors tonight can be found there. Um, and then another really quick point, speaking to something we've seen just today. Um, we would like to ask the community to, um, show some discretion in posting about ambulance or police runs at specific homes. Um, we've started to see some posts saying, um, you know, the ambulance was at this house with a picture and masks were used. And then some, um, speculation about whether or not somebody might have been, um, infected. I just wanna point out from our police and fire departments that all of our first responders are taking extra precautions right now. Um, the wearing of a mask or the giving a mask to a patient does not mean in any way that there's a virus. And we would just, we would just ask that people are cautious about posting that or making those kinds of assumptions. And, um, that's all I have for the evening.
Thank you for all your hard work too, Kara. Um, I know you've been, um, just punching out some, some work in those last two weeks and, um, just wanted to say how grateful we are.
Thank you so much, and I just, I'm so appreciative of all of your leadership.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, that is the staff, that is not DIA staff. I'll hand it back to you for the City Attorney Manager and Clerk.
All right, um, Dan Christ are legal tonight. Do you have any?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item. Uh, most of council may be aware, but the 43rd District Court is now closed, along with most courts. Uh, and it, it is closed until April 6th. It will reopen on April 7th, but only on a very limited basis, uh, for certain felony matters. Uh, and all other cases, uh, both civil as well as criminal cases at the court, uh, are going to be adjourned, uh, by the court. Uh, but for those people who have pending matters, they can contact the court at its general office number, 248-547-8700. And, uh, other than that, everyone just, uh, please, uh, stay safe and, uh, practice good social distancing, and I hope everyone has a good evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christ. Um, Madam Clerk, anything from you tonight?
No, it's a little bit quiet. We are still answering our phones. Uh, we are responding to any requests for FOIA's as best we can. Uh, if we can't get the information to them, we have contacted everybody to let them know there may be a delay due to the fact that we can't reach the files that we need to, um, in particular, physical files. And they've been very understanding. Um, any other questions that just kinda filter over to us? We just forward it on to the correct department. And everybody stay safe.
Thank you very much. Um, City Manager?
Yeah, um, just a few acknowledgements. Uh, first, uh, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, the Parks and Recreation Department and Lorena. The item was tabled today, but there's a lot of work that has gone on in the background to, um, work through just the general project process and bid process and, and securing the grants. So though it was tabled, I wanted to acknowledge that work, that was a two-year effort. So thank you for your work. Uh, and briefly, uh, I just wanna acknowledge, uh, my Emergency Operations Team. We meet in the morning and that's, that's Fire Command and Police Command and Human Resources and Communications and the Assistant City Manager. And it's, it's just been extremely impressive to watch how quickly, uh, we became a team and how quickly we, uh, became cohesive and collaborative. And I think it's, um, I haven't had this kind of a working group meet and ramp up this quickly and be the, the successful this immediately. And then just broadly to, to everyone in the city, um, I really appreciate you've all stepped up, uh, with courage and integrity to, to meet the, to meet the moment. Um, you all adapted rapidly and quickly, what we asked you to adapt to. And so, uh, to everybody on and off this call, I just applaud you and I acknowledge your public service. You do us all proud.
Thank you. All right, moving on to council members. Um, I'm gonna start with, uh, Councilwoman James.
All right, um, thank you, Mayor Piana. Um, I have a couple of notes, so forgive me if I look down, because I'm gonna try and remember to hit a couple of highlights. Um, the main thing that I wanted to acknowledge is how supportive and patient the community has been during this time. Um, I think everyone has been very understanding that, that we and city staff are adapting to very, very rapid changes, um, trying to do our best to, um, deliver some level of normalcy and routine and, and fulfill obligations, um, amidst a dynamically changing atmosphere and, and limitations. Um, to that end, I'm, I'm thrilled with how, uh, tonight's meeting process has gone. It hasn't been without some, um, disappointments. I know that very early on, there was a technical failure on the cable broadcast and, um, I hope that that is, um, fixed. And, uh, this will be up on the cable broadcast as soon as possible. Um, but otherwise, I very much applaud the City Management Team, Communications, and IT for making this work so smoothly. And to the community for, um, adapting to this change as well. Um, I, some of us have been on probably 10 or more Zoom calls within the last couple of days, but for some community members, this might be your very first one. Um, so I hope that you're sort of clicking around and getting to know the platform, 'cause, um, we're definitely gonna be doing it at least one more time, but I think the reality is, is we're gonna be doing this a number of times. Um, we will try to improve every time. I hope that you will, um, like I said, click, click around and get comfortable with it. Look at the different views. There's a speaker view and a gallery view. Um, getting to know those features will help you participate, uh, more robustly and, and for us to interact with you, um, when necessary and appropriate. Um, this is gonna be a long haul. Um, I don't want to be, uh, overly optimistic, um, to the public or in any way, uh, represent that, you know, in two weeks, everything's gonna go back to normal and everything's gonna be fine, 'cause I don't think that's the case. This is gonna be a, a lengthy process and it's gonna get, um, pretty intense in the next couple of weeks. Um, it will most likely touch our community, um, and we will have to respond and deal with that to the best of our ability. There will be grief over loss of life, grief over loss of income and livelihood and loss of businesses. Um, but we are going to get through this and we're gonna find new ways to work together and adapt and recover. Um, and in the meantime, we need to really keep panic at bay because we need to take reasonable, measured steps in response to this crisis. Um, part of that is, uh, being mindful of what's within our own control, um, and really focusing on that, doing our part to, to stay home and, uh, reduce the curve, give the healthcare system time to adapt and get prepared. Um, and I really recommend that, um, you can still go for neighborhood walks and, um, and engage in appropriate social distancing. You can hang out on your porch and wave to neighbors as they walk by. Um, and don't forget to breathe. It's really critical during this time when you're experiencing anxiety. Sometimes that can even be, um, confused for COVID-19 symptoms because we need to be taking deep belly breaths to keep that panic at bay. Um, and I want to, um, thank and acknowledge, um, Mayor Piana, um, for, uh, communicating with, uh, the Aaronsons, who, um, as you may recall, used to own, uh, the Garden Fresh Company in our community. They now have a new, um, company, and I suspect Mayor Piana will talk about this a bit more in her remarks, but they made a generous donation of food for local seniors. Um, and Mayor Piana has taken on leadership of distributing that food. Um, and I know that, um, a lot of folks are concerned about our seniors because of the, um, impact that this virus seems to have on seniors in particular. And so I wanna thank and acknowledge, um, Councilwoman Raylan Leaks-May, um, and also Community Member Kat Latash, who have laid a lot of groundwork in, um, in, uh, the communities for a lifetime, uh, and, and senior survey process. They've helped us to understand that a lot of our seniors aren't connected online and they need to get their resources delivered to them in the mail and they need to know who to call, um, 'cause they don't have all these links and, um, social media resources that, that a lot of us are relying on these days. Um, so I'm gonna be looking at, um, providing, um, some response to that. And I'm really interested in putting together a senior rapid response team in the community so that we can meet their needs during this time. I'm encouraging people to, um, engage with your, uh, local neighborhood group. If you have one on Facebook, there, there are about 20 neighborhood groups on Facebook. It's a great way to find out who lives right near you and fill in the gaps. Find out who's not on social media and be sure to exchange phone numbers with them. Um, and in the future, I think we need to be looking a little bit at local food security. Um, I'm hoping to talk to some community members about that in the near future. Um, because even when there's a return to normal, um, it's gonna be a new normal. We're going to be using technology more to reduce our unnecessary travel, um, a lot more work from home. I know a lot of city staff are working from home right now, um, supporting our local food chains, um, compensating and protecting our essential workers, um, and everybody getting their flu shot. So let's look at some of the positive adaptations and changes that we're gonna have to look to moving forward. Sorry, I know that was lengthy. I appreciate your indulgence.
No, thank you very much. Um, why don't we move on to, uh, Councilwoman McCulkey? Oh wait, your microphone's not on?
Sorry, I have a cat in the background, so I'm trying to...
Sorry, I have a cat in the background, so I'm trying to, trying to mute myself from time to time. Um, I wanted to start out by commending some of our grocery stores in the area, uh, so Western Market as well as Ferndale Foods. Ferndale Foods, starting tomorrow, uh, will be, will be operating from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. They'll be open specifically for the elderly, in this case, 16 up. Um, it's fantastic. Western Market is also doing the same thing. Uh, this is really a service for a lot of our seniors and immunocompromised people within the community. Um, I would encourage anybody who is part of a vulnerable group to go out to those grocery stores at that time. These stores are also closing early and I know that our county executive had put out a, a statement or an order that was encouraging that these places close early, to sanitize, to check their workers so that we are all safe anytime that we have to go out because obviously we shouldn't be stockpiling. Um, get what you have to, get what you need for roughly about two weeks and then go out and just practice safety. Uh, wear a, a homemade mask if you have them. Um, I've been really impressed with the community response in making some of these homemade masks. I've seen some that have been distributed to workers at Western Market. I've seen several people walking around wearing those kinds of masks. And I myself have a mask that one of our residents made for me. Um, again, I love that Evelyn Ulster has made masks for our fire department and I'm assuming for our EMS workers as well. It's a real service. We know that they work. Um, they may not work 100%, so we do have to still practice our safe social distancing, but we should be encouraged to, to go out, live our life just within the parameters that are being proposed by the CDC and WHO. Um, beyond that, I did want to take a moment to just commend our city staff on responding as fast as they have to, to everything that's been happening. You know, I know that I had been a little bit pushy on Friday concerning the skate park. Um, and I know that there had been quite a few people who are upset about our playgrounds and our skate parks being closed. Um, it was necessary and I deeply, deeply appreciate that you moved so fast on it and that our police force is responding accordingly. So again, uh, just to sum it up, I would say, let's all be safe. Let's get through this. It's going to be a long haul. Um, it's already affecting Ferndale and it's affecting some of the cities near us a little bit more heavily. But if we're all in this together and we all practice our safe social distancing and we stay home and we have to, um, we should be able to get through it. And I'm, I'm hoping that we can get through it faster than we expect.
Thank you very much for those comments. Uh, Councilwoman Leaks May.
All right. So first, can you hear me? I just want you to, okay. So first, I'd like to, one, thank the city staff for, uh, one, and IT for putting this meeting together so quickly. We went through some practice runs and I think it's run beautifully. This may be the way things have to be for a while and I really appreciate all the work that you put into this. I'd also like to thank, uh, council members, uh, and, and the mayor for stepping up and, uh, helping out the community in a multitude of ways, like, uh, like, uh, Councilwoman Bruner James stated, uh, Mayor, your leadership in this has been, I just think, very commendable. And the fact that seniors, uh, that you, uh, kind of help with that, uh, you're helping with the distribution of the meals from the Aaronsons, uh, I think it's just wonderful as well as you do, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Bruner James. I think that's, um, going to sustain some seniors that are, uh, vulnerable and aren't able to maybe get out and get those meals and, and, and get out as maybe as soon as, as, as much as they were used to. Um, Police, Fire, DPW, thank you so much for being out there and still working on our behalf. Um, and it's at a risk to you, yet you're still working for us and I just can't tell you how much I thank you enough. I really appreciate you. And to the community, my goodness, I have seen so much either via social media or even on the, the, out and on the streets, uh, the community coming together and looking out for one another and checking in on one another. It's just been amazing and I just, uh, like, uh, Mayor Piana stated earlier, we're all in this together and we need to keep looking out for each other. So, to friends and, and the community members that I personally know, I just want you to know that I'm thinking of you and, um, actually all the community, I'm thinking of you. I miss seeing you on the streets and, um, when this pandemic is over, although our lives will change, I look forward to, uh, greeting each other once again and, and feeling comfortable enough to come up and give you hugs and just, um, I ask that you just stay, um, faithful and, and hopeful and that, uh, we'll get through this. We'll get through this. And I just want to thank everyone for their input and their help in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And, uh, Councilwoman Polka.
Uh, yes, thank you Mayor. Uh, so several weeks ago, uh, residents should have received a large letter envelope from the 2020 Census Bureau. Uh, this is an introductory letter, um, that contains your unique residential code or census ID. Um, about a week or 10 days later, you should have received the standard size letter. This communication contains the same unique census ID code. Um, and this letter also contains the web address to complete the census survey. Um, I know some residents don't have access to the internet. Um, a phone number is provided for you to call and complete the survey over the phone. Um, we are asking everyone to please, please complete this by April 1st. Um, after, after April 1st, the census will be, um, identifying addresses that did not respond and then over the summer, uh, hopefully when our situation improves, uh, the census will send out volunteers who will be visiting those residents who did not respond. So please, 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 um, respond via the internet or over the phone so that we don't have to send out people to, uh, uh, to talk with you during the summer. Uh, and remember that individual census information is kept sealed for 72 years. So once the information is gathered and added to the system, any trace of your individual identity is kept separate and will not be accessed for 72 years. Um, again, I cannot express enough the importance of getting accurate information for our city. Um, census information affects city and school funding on multiple levels and in times of crisis, it can make the difference in whether Ferndale receives enough federal and state emergency assistance to keep our city operating and our citizens safe and protected. Um, and even further, it helps determine the new districting lines that will be established in 2021, 2022, uh, for electing our federal and state representatives and senators, um, over, for the next 10 years. Um, so please, take 10 minutes out of your day. Um, you, you, we're all self-isolated right now, so you, you have a couple of minutes you can spare, um, to go online or make the phone call and complete the survey. Uh, I was told earlier today that we are at 34% complete, um, in Ferndale and, and that's just not good enough. Um, I would love us to be able to, to be at least 90% by April 2nd. Um, speaking of April, on April 1st, uh, we are planning a virtual Census Day, uh, Town Hall, uh, on the internet. Uh, we've just started the planning, so a lot of these details haven't been completely nailed down. Um, so watch social media and the city's website and our cable channel for more information. But basically, we're going to talk about, um, what the information, uh, how the information impacts the city and why this information is so important. Uh, so, so, um, if you're interested, attend the Town Hall and, uh, um, and get that survey done, please. And, and finally, um, I, I just echo, uh, my colleagues', um, comments. Uh, you guys have been incredible. I am so, so proud to work with each and every one of you. Um, uh, it has just been, uh, an incredible experience working through these last couple of weeks and, and I know that at times we may be in a little, uh, touchy with each other and, and I, for my part, I apologize. Um, but, uh, I respect each and every one of you and, uh, thank you for, for always stepping up, um, and, and giving your all. And I want to thank all of our city staff. Everyone, um, has had, uh, to change the way that we're doing business very quickly, uh, over the past two weeks. Sometimes we've had less than a day notice. Sometimes we weren't told about a directive until after it was issued, um, and everyone had to scramble. Uh, so thank you all for being flexible while still giving 110% and keeping the city running from your homes. Um, of course, our police and fire and DPW are not working from home. They're actually working here in the city, um, continuing to, to serve our community. So, thank you, everyone. And be safe.
Thank you very much, Councilman. So, tonight I wanted to start off with my comments as the final one, um, with something that was going to happen if we had a, um, real council meeting in the chambers. And I was really proud tonight to announce, um, from the Metro Detroit Youth Clubs, Brett Tillender is the CEO there, reached out to me and said if we could honor one of their students. And, um, we have a Ferndale High School student graduating this year and his name is Romelo Huey and he has been, um, awarded the 20, uh, 2020 Member of the Year Club and is a member of the Jack and Arison Club in Ferndale through the Metro Detroit Youth Clubs. And he is the Member of the Year and, um, Brett and Romelo were going to come and, um, introduce Romelo tonight in front of council and just wanted to say, uh, what a champion he's been of the, uh, member club program, um, and that he's been engaged and participated in every program at the club being offered and, um, he even went on all the college tours. And the quote that I got was, "He needed the club and the club needed him." And he's overcome many obstacles in his life and has come out on top. And so I just wanted to extend a congratulations to Romelo Huey from Ferndale High School, um, on behalf of, uh, myself and the city council and, um, the city of Ferndale. And hopefully, uh, we can recognize him with a proclamation too, um, and maybe present it in the future, um, maybe over the summer. Um, moving on, I just wanted to, um, talk about the, uh, coro, uh, coronavirus response. A lot of it has been said tonight and, um, I just want to say that, you know, our mission right now is to save lives and to stay safe. And I've been really proud of all of our residents who are trying to, who are working hard to fulfill that mission of saving lives and saving, savings, uh, oh my gosh, saving lives and staying safe. Um, and people are staying home and if you don't need to leave the house, um, you are in just going out and do the, the basics of groceries and pharmacy or whatever you need. Um, been really proud of how we've been coming together, uh, during this time, um, to help one another, to check in, to make sure that your neighbors are, have what they need, um, during this restrictive period. And I know it's a lot to sacrifice. All of us are sacrificing right now, um, our residents, but also our business owners who were forced to close, who are, um, feeling, feeling the pain, um, uh, because they are, are not bringing in an income for their families and for those who may have been laid off from work. Um, we are thinking, um, about you and working very hard to make sure that when we move into recovery, um, that this team here is, um, responsive, um, in that way as well. So I did want to talk about ways for the community come together during this time. I have seen, um, events being posted on Facebook, well-intentioned, six feet apart, um, events where people come together and, um, you know, uh, try to be in a park. But what I've seen is that, um, you wanted to keep it limited, but it over, grows over time, um, because everybody wants to be helpful and be supportive and I think there's just a lot of interest to get out of the house, frankly. Um, but I'm asking folks to see, if you, um, you know, please honor the governor's executive order, make sure that, um, you are staying at home in the six feet apart and please try to limit or, I'm sorry, please don't try to create, um, creative events on Facebook, um, where more than 10 people might show up. I think that's very hard to manage, um, and our police and fire don't condone it. So I've been asked, um, you know, people coming with their ideas and, um, unfortunately, the city is saying we don't condone those, uh, requests. Um, but in lieu of that, the ways that community come together during this time is, is what I've already seen, which is the window walks, posting art in the windows so people can see them on their walks in their neighborhoods. Um, one that is happening up in a lot of cities and I've seen in ours already, um, is drawing on the sidewalks with chalk in front of your house. Um, I'm going to be doing that tomorrow and leave a message for my neighbors for those walking by. So these are other ways that we can engage, um, our residents, um, while we are restricted into our household. So, um, and I also wanted to, um, give an update on the Jack and Annette Arison, um, Clean Planet Foods donation of their microwaveable modest meals. It was in the news on the radio and, um, I've been working very closely with, uh, Councilwoman Kat Bruner James to identify the seniors who will be receiving the meals. If you had, um, seen my, um, Facebook video, um, addressing the community, I talked about these, um, donations and, uh, said that we might need volunteers. Um, at this time, we are not going to be taking volunteers due to the, um, extra precautions for, uh, delivering this food to the seniors and we will be working through, uh, the fire and, fire department and the CERT team to see if they are able to help at this time. But I wanted to thank, um, Affirmations, Renaissance, Unity Church, um, the Area Agency on Aging 1B, um, and the Ferndale Housing Commission for identifying the seniors, um, who really would benefit from these meals. And we are working through, uh, distribution, um, this week of getting those out into the field. So, um, again, I just wanted to say how critical it was to have, uh, Councilwoman Leaks May's information on the aging, uh, the communities of a lifetime on our seniors. It was really helpful information in setting this up. So, um, again, thank you to our staff for, um, your amazing work and going above and beyond in an unprecedented time. And we've been through crises before and I had no doubt that you would handle this with courage and grace like you have. Um, I'm just so honored to be, um, the mayor and working with all of you. And to our residents, um, I know this is hard. We are going to get through it. Um, and we will figure out how to recover together and come and support this community once, um, the restrictions are, um, removed. And we really don't know when that will be, but I am like Councilwoman, uh, James, is that it's going to be longer than we think. And so with that tonight, just want to thank you for tuning in tonight. Please let us know if you experienced any technical issues that we may not be aware of here, but I think this went pretty, pretty well tonight and, um, I'm really proud, um, that we didn't, uh, have, uh, too many technical difficulties as I've seen in other cities. So, um, kudos to, to everyone. And with that, um, me and my gavel at home, my invisible gavel, um, I'm going to call this meeting to end at exactly 9:29. Have a great evening, stay safe, wash your hands, stay six feet apart. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks Mayor.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Cheers.
Cheers.